Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission on Wednesday, March 6th, 2019. The time is 1:31 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Daniel Henderson, Michael DiMartini, Bill Hauck, Michael Drinkwater, John Enlow, John Flansburgh, Mickey Hazelwood, John Martini, John Combs, Dave Solero, Mervyn Wright, John Zimmerman, Harry Fonstock, Thomas Payette, Mylan Nigayan, Cindy Turcheck, Ron Penrose. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now's the time for public comments. They're limited to three minutes, time per person. I have no comment cards and see no one in the audience that would like to make a public comment. Next item is approval of the agenda for possible action. A motion for approval from Commissioner Flansburgh and a second from Commissioner Zimmerman, right. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is approval of the minutes from the February 6th, 2019 meeting for possible action.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, those minutes were not quite ready for this meeting, so we'll have to continue those until the April meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Smitherman, we'll go on now to the next item. Review draft fiscal year 2019 to 2020, Western Regional Water Commission, tentative budget, discussion and possible direction to staff and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Commission for approval. Mr. Whistle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this format should be familiar to all of you, is pretty much the same as we had last year. Formatting-wise, we have, actually, the front page has been changed into portrait instead of a landscape, so that's the biggest change we've made. But going through, we'll run through the budget real quickly and then just give you an idea of where we're at, and then we can go through and discuss some of the items within the tentative professional services budget detail. So, starting off this year, if you're looking on the first page under revenue, you'll see that we have an estimated revenue of $1.537 million for the 1.5% surcharge that we expect to come in. We have a grant in revenue of $40,000. That's part of the state revolving fund, I believe it's for the 208 program. That becomes available to us periodically, and so we're looking to use that again this year. We have some interest income because we're in investment pool, and that's anticipated to be just under $20,000. So our total revenues will be 1.0, right around 1.6 million for the year. Under professional services and supplies, you can see that our estimated professional services outlined on page two have an amount of 1.658 million available for professional services this year. Staff costs are at 534,000, and non-staff services would be 46,700 for the year. And that gives us a total expenditures of 2.239 million for the year. If you're going down to where it says net change in cash reserves, we will outspend our earnings by $643,000 and change for the year. That will be the decrease in our net cash reserves. So, on the next section down, we have our, basically, our budget analysis. You'll see that our cash balance at the beginning of this year was 1.295 million dollars. The estimate to, the estimated revenue was 1.531, which I, we're looking to, that we should easily make by the end of the year. In fact, we'll surpass that. The estimated expenditures for the year is 1.7 million and change, and then estimated cash balance at 7.1 will be $1,046,000 at the beginning of this upcoming fiscal year in June 1st, or July 1st of 2019. If we take out the net cash reserves of 643,000, we have an estimated cash balance at the end of next fiscal year should be right at $400,000 for the year. The key in the remaining balance column is, as you know, by resolution, we are required to maintain six months of operating expenses. That comes to about 360, 380, depending. So 400 is kind of a place where we shoot for to end up with our cash reserve at the end of the year. So, I think we're right on target with that. Moving to page two, this is our budget detail for our tentative professional services budget detail. This is pretty much similar to what you've seen in the past. This is based on, the items that are listed here are based on the rankings that we did earlier in November of this year. And you'll see that this represents the six categories that we are required by the legislation to plan for and support with the Regional Water Management Fund. So all our projects fall within these categories. Just as a note, approximately $1 million is actually encumbered in either projects that we fund annually as a rule, or projects that have multi-year contracts. So that leaves us about $600,000 to rearrange as we see fit. You'll notice that several, there are several project locations within the categories that have zeros. Those are things that received votes at our priority setting workshop, but we don't actually, one, we don't have a project associated with them, or have any anticipated expenditures related to that subject matter, or it's something that you or the Western Regional Water Commission has indicated that they are not interested in funding moving forward. So, but again, all those are up for discussion today. Something new that was proposed by Commissioner Drinkwater during the last workshop was a project contingency fund. If you look, I think it's the, let's see, it's the fourth line from the bottom, there's $200,000 in that contingency fund. Those are funds that have not been specifically allocated to any particular project, but the idea being that they would be available to us to fund things that come up around the year, throughout the year. And I can say, certainly from our experience in the past, that seems to be a common occurrence, that one, we either need to fund something that we didn't anticipate, or change, enhance a funding amount that we already engaged in. So, again, that's up for discussion, but since it came up in the workshop, we thought we'd throw that in there for your consideration. So that pretty much outlines everything on this particular page, page two. Page three is our routine operating expenses, really nothing new here, but you will see some of the lines in gray at the top. That was just set up so that we had included some of the overhead from Washto County, the COW CAP, within, we kind of bunched it in with the employees. Some of it has to do with full-time, for employees, associated with employees, while other overhead is not associated with employees. Last year, we bundled that together just without breaking it out, and we felt that maybe we should just show you how that lays out. So that's just a, that's just a breakout, so you can see how, how much of the, how much of the salaries benefits, for example, and then allocated overhead, and then how the Washto County general overhead is broken out. There's three different categories there. And in addition to that, you'll see down in the non-staff-related services, there used to be a category designated as website. In the beginning, we used to pay for our website development. Now with the COW CAP, that's part of our, it's an included element, but we still have website-related things that we fund. That seemed to have been a confusion with some of the commissioners, so we wanted to make sure that that was broken out. And you can see that there's some for, there's a little bit for tech services, should we need anything, and then we also host the TRIG and the TMRPA servers. We host those. So, at any rate, those are, those are outlined there, just so that they're broken out. And then, of course, page four is our estimate to complete. That basically just is our anticipated expenses throughout the end of the year, and that's pretty self-explanatory. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would turn it back to you for discussion direction to staff on how we should proceed with this budget.
Thank you, Chris. You did a good job, I think, in explaining everything on here. Would anybody have any questions, or want to give any direction to staff regarding this Seeing none, is there anything else anybody would like to say? Oh, there is one. Commissioner Henderson. Oh, sorry. Mr. Flansburgh.
So I just want to speak in general. So obviously, we realize we're spending down the balance that we have. I think the thing that makes me comfortable in doing what we have here is based on some of those very important projects that we have listed in our capital, or our professional services, but also, you know, we do have this 230,000 that's in the budget, but it's contingency-related, and so it gives me a little more comfort level with this budget, that we have that contingency in there. It's available if we need to spend it, but if we don't spend it, it gives us a little more cushion in our cash balance at the end. So I'm comfortable with this budget and would be willing to approve. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 1920 budget of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion for...
Western Region Water Commission, I should say. Recommend, recommend approval by the Western Region Water Commission of this budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Flansburgh. We have a motion for approval. There are a second, and a second from Commissioner Drinkwater. Question? Yes, Commissioner Enlow.
I just had a question, and maybe we were going to talk about this later, I'm sorry. Maybe we were going to talk about this later, but, so we've got, where is it? In the localized flooding line item, $160,000. And I know when we had our workshop, the county and Reno were working together to try to come up with a scope of work and a project, and I think this commission was supportive of that funding, facilitating your efforts. Can you give us an update on where that stands?
Who is...
I can feel that, just from, from the depth that I know, that there is a scope of work that's being negotiated. I think Washto County's in the lead, but they're working with the city of Reno to retain, I believe it's HDR, to study places along the irrigation ditch systems where they convey floodwater, and there's a danger of spilling and causing localized flooding. So the scope is, as I understand, is supposed to look at, through some field investigations, where the water is actually coming from. Is it overtopping headgates? Is it coming down natural drainages that intersect the ditches, et cetera, and then try to come up with some engineering recommendations on how to safeguard where the flooding is most likely to be. I have talked to one of the engineers, supervising engineer at Washto County, and made him aware of this as a priority for the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, and that we have a budget this fiscal year that we could at least initiate the scope of work, and he's aware of that and is factoring that into his negotiations. But I haven't seen the scope of work yet. I believe it's in the works, and hopefully will be coming out before the end of the fiscal year. And then that would come forward for a recommendation for funding to this, to this board.
Commissioner Enlow, another question.
I just have one other comment related to that. We had a stormwater GIS mapping budget of $100,000, and I believe that was for the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency to possibly continue with that effort. I mean, my personal opinion is I would rather rely on the city of Reno and Washto County to do that mapping than have Regional Planning Agency do that mapping. So I would be willing to either move that 100 into that 160 line item, or put that 100 in the contingency fund, because I really don't think they're the ones that need to be working on this effort. I know Western Regional Water Commission, they were kind of advocating for that in the past, but, like I said, I think the work should be done by the entities who are responsible for that effort.
Okay. On that item, Jim, is that something we previously, do we need to go back and revisit that item at some point to do the item that Commissioner Enlow is talking about?
I don't think so. I think you could do it by motion.
Yeah, he can do a motion right now to amend the budget, to change it, however, as he just stated.
Right. I guess it would be, ask the motion to be amended?
Okay.
To make that move?
Is there anybody that would like to amend?
Yeah, I would request that that $100,000 be put in the project contingency fund line item, and that way it provides us more flexibility.
Commissioner Flansburgh, would you like to amend your motion regarding that?
Yes, I will, I will amend the motion to recommend approval by the Western Regional Water Commission of this budget with that change of the stormwater GIS mapping moving into project contingency funds for flexibility of funding.
Okay. Do we have an amended second? Commissioner Drinkwater?
Sure, I mean, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. So we have a motion, amended motion and amended second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great, so we're done with the budget for a week or two. Our next item is a report on activities of the Nevada Water Innovations Institute, including projects concerning the regional category A-plus reclaimed water feasibility study, parentheses, One Water Nevada, in parentheses, and possible direction to staff. Commissioner, or Mr. Smitherman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll kick this one off as Dr. Pagila comes to the podium. Last October, staff introduced the title, One Water Nevada, for the regional feasibility study to determine if category A-plus reclaimed water would be beneficial for our region. So hence, you understand why we shortened the title down to something that's easily pronounced. On this commission's recommendations, the Western Regional Water Commission has engaged UNR, specifically the Department of Civil and Engineering, Civil and Environmental Engineering, in a small number of projects that are part of the One Water Nevada effort. The first to be initiated was the Advanced Water Treatment Technologies Demonstration Project. That one kicked off about two and a half years ago in 2016. The concept for the Nevada Water Innovation Institute was actually kind of a spin-off from the efforts surrounding that technology demonstration project, and it getting off the ground. So, as Dr. Pagila has come to the podium right now, he'll fill you in on the advanced water treatment project, kind of where its status is right now, and then on other Nevada Water Innovation Institute activities that are pertinent to this One Water Nevada effort. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Pagila.
Thank you. Dr. Pagila.
Thank you. Chairman DiMartini and Commissioners, for the record, my name is Krishna Pagila. I'm a professor and director of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute at the University of Nevada, Reno. I would like to commend this commission first. As Mr. Smitherman mentioned, this is the decision of this commission to fund this regional project, which is Advanced Water Technology Demonstration, which led us to today where we have created this One Water Nevada Initiative, as well as the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which is doing significant amount of work as it is, and is nationally recognized now to be a leading research institute, conducting research on water technologies. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and go with the rest of the presentation. You have here are the seven projects I have listed, which kind of fall into this category of this One Water Nevada initiatives, as well as the partners of the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which are, who are represented here on the commission. So, as I mentioned earlier, is the first project is the Advanced Water Technology Demonstration, and what you have next to each of those listing is the acronyms of the agencies and cities that you already know. The first project was funded by, is funded by Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission and Western Regional Water Commission. So if you see there, Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission or Western Regional Water Commission, you see it's being interchangeably used. And under that project, we are not only doing very specific tasks described in that scope, but we are providing broader support to all of the One Water Nevada Initiative projects. And that's why you'll see WRWC next to multiple projects. And the second project I'll briefly discuss for you is the Stormwater, South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Pilot Scale A-plus Water Technology Demonstration. This came as a result of a U.S. Bureau of Reclamation grant, which was supplemented by Washto County, and then greatly supported by TOMWA in much of the analytical support and some funding we've used from the regional project. Then I'll briefly talk about the current project we are doing for Washto County, which is primarily addressing the effluent and biosolids goals of the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Embedded in that project is also the category A-plus demonstration, which we are continuing to look at. And then a couple of projects which are specifically focused on looking at the nitrogen control issues and some of the process issues at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, and then followed by two projects, one dealing with category A-plus demonstration, which is kind of, I look at it as the culmination of all the work we have done so far, which will start this summer. And finally, Project 7, which is also a regional effort, which is funded by this commission and the Western Regional Water Commission, which is Regional Effluent Plant Guidance, which is being conducted by Dr. Jeff Curtis, who is here in the audience, who will brief you on that following me. So this is the first project which we started, which is the Advanced Water Technology Demonstration Project, which had seven goals, basically developing a rationale for doing category A-plus water in the Truckee Meadows region. We have completed that. When I say completed, we finished the report to the 95% completion, and we always keep it open till the end of the project and make modifications as we learn new information. Following that, we finished the task two, which is looking at what are the appropriate technologies for this region to achieve category A-plus water. And then we developed a basis of design for the pilot scale plant, as well as the demonstration system testing plan, which was implemented at the South Truckee Meadows Plant during the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation project. So consequence of those four events, we are now better prepared to go to Reno State for the category A-plus technology demonstration, all the way from production of category A-plus water to injecting it into the ground, and evaluating the effectiveness of the whole system in achieving the goals of One Water Nevada Initiative. So that's what we are under right now, the task five and task six, which are, which are going on. And this summer, we will get the equipment started at Reno State, which will be the system operation and data collection, which will go on for about a year. Very hard to see, but I just want, I know you have it in your notes, is basically give you a status of where we are. What you see in green are the tasks that we completed, the task one through four. Task five and six are underway, and task seven will be commencing this summer, and it will go on through end of fiscal year 1920. You have seen this slide prepared by Lydia Perry from Washto County, which kind of gives you where things are moving. I won't go over it in detail, but if you look at it, there are three major efforts. At South Truckee Meadows, we have the three trailers, which we haven't been able to do that, because the third trailer is still under construction, but we have addressed evaluating the first two trailers, taking advantage of the opportunity we got through the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation Project, which has its own set of goals, which I'll show you in a minute. So from there, we will go to Reno State, where all the three trailers will be demonstrating category A-plus water. And we do have plans to test those three trailers out at South Truckee Meadows with funding from Washto County, as well as the Western Regional Water Commission under the One Water Nevada Initiative. And also, activities are underway at Cold Springs Facility, but more on the infiltration option of producing category A-plus water. So that transition me into Project Two, which is, was initiated by the funding from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, supplemented by Washto County. That's why you'll see the logo of Washto County on the top there. Of course, I would be amazed if I don't mention TOMWA, which has provided tremendous support in analyzing many of the pathogen samples. So under this project, the specific goals that, and deliverables for the Bureau of Reclamation, which are due end of this month, are to develop a category A-plus water value study, which UNR conducted, and then evaluate method to create an account for a new category A-plus water ride, which is being conducted by Washto County itself, in-house, with input from the state engineer's office and other groups, and then evaluate IPR's ability to enable the region with greater water resiliency under different climate change effects. That is also completed. We are preparing, we are finalizing the report with consultation with TOMWA and Washto County. And then finally, look at evaluating low-energy water treatment technologies for IPR. This was more of a state-of-the-art technologies review stuff, but we really took advantage of this project and demonstrated at South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, the pilot scale varshen, which also gave us additional data to show that this is the best strategy for us in terms of energy use for water produced, rather than other technologies that are out there. So as I mentioned, you saw the three trailers at South Truckee Meadows in two slides ago, and this slide here basically shows us that the, we have two of the trailers we analyzed. On the left, there are four units, coagulation, settler, absorption clarifier, and mixed-media filter. That was barrier one, which we have already demonstrated at South Truckee Meadows. We have very good data, we are analyzing that, and we will bring that out as a technical report that will guide us in submitting a permit application to NDP for Reno State demonstration. And then on the right side, you see the ozone BAC trailer processes, which have also been tested. We are continuing to test them, and one of the goals is that we take these two barriers, or what we call pathogen barriers, and we add the third trailer, which is being constructed funded by Washto County, and include all those three trailers, and do a trial run at South Truckee Meadows Facility, which will give us valuable data for the plant itself, for South Truckee Meadows, if and when Washto County considers that as an option, and then also prepares us to go ahead and get started at Reno State without any delay in collecting data. Just a point, I mentioned that this particular project is supported by Bureau of Reclamation Grant and Washto County, and now we are continuing that work under the Western Regional Water Commission or the Nevada Water Planning Commission grant. So, status of this project, it is completed pilot scale data collection with the two trailers I mentioned. We are preparing reports, and those three technical reports that will be critical for demonstrating to NDP, for at least for the Reno State demonstration project are showing pathogen credits using coagulation, flocculation, sedimentation, and filtration, and also organics removal using ozone BAC and potential ozone BAC pathogen removal as well. So those three technical reports will be available, and I can update this commission in the next month or two, when we have the data. This is the next project, which is solely funded by Washto County, looking at effluent and biosolids goals, much broader goals here. Investigate arsenic removal from effluent using the coagulation, flocculation, sedimentation, and filtration process, which we completed. Of course, the second goal is related to One Water Nevada Initiative, which is looking at category A-plus pilot operation, which we also completed. We are currently investigating some issues with the aerobic digestion process, where we are trying to understand the effects of polymers on oxygen transfer and thickening, so that the process could be optimized to operate as needed, as well as reduce the chemical cost. And finally, we, under this project, we are tasked to provide some support to update a plant process model which already exists. This project is the modeling study that has been funded by City of Sparks, primarily to look at ways for us to use a process model, which is software, BioWin, and collect data to calibrate this. to calibrate this model, and also use that calibrated model to look at different options for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, particularly if we can show it using System Three. If we were to move the nitrogen control from the nitrate filters and D-nitrate filters upstream into the secondary treatment, and what we call as combined carbon-nitrogen-phosphorus configurations, then how would that have an effect on the plant? Will that be a strategy going forward? So this project, I am involved in it, but my colleague, Dr. Eric Marchand, is the principal investigator, and in this project, the data collection is underway, and as well as we are working with the model as well. Another project in which I'm involved actively, but which is led by Dr. Marchand again, which is looking at the DON, or dissolved organic nitrogen removal, which is an issue at TMAW in meeting the nitrogen permit, which makes up a significant part of the NPDS permit, mass loading to the Truckee River. This project is just underway. We moved the trailer, now it's installed and commissioned. In fact, as of last week, we underwent training with the vendor, and our students are operating it now. In fact, the chemicals have been initiated. And so we will collect data from this plant for another 11 months. It's a 12-month pilot study. UNR has done, under a different project previously, a lot of lap-scale work, which showed the proof of concept that this methodology can work and at least give a significant relief to the dissolved organic nitrogen that is present in the effluent. So ultimately, the goal of this project is to provide recommendations for potential implementation, also not only from the liquid treatment point of view, but also what do you do with the solids? Will they have an impact on the plant if they are processed during the normal sludge processing facilities, or do you need to treat with them separately? So we have two PhD students being supported on this project, and it's going now. So we hope to have very good data for TMAW. And of course, this project is funded by City of Reno, as well as City of Sparks. This is the last of the projects that I want to discuss, which is just, has been under contract for about a month and a half, or two months, late December. Right now, we are at a very preliminary stage, where we are supporting City of Reno and TMAW, and doing some of those hydrogeological investigations, both at American Flat Road site, as well as the Reno State Airport property site, where, you know, we are trying to understand the hydrogeological characteristics in terms of permeability of water, what it might do to the formation. So so far, our students have helped TMAW staff in going and collecting samples during injection, both of the injectate, which is potable water or groundwater, and then whatever is in the ground. So but the actual work for this project doesn't start until summer, where we will have the pilot units on site, and once we get the permit, we will start producing Category A-plus water and developing that into information that could be potential implementation in the future. Just to kind of sum up, in terms of what are some of the things that are happening with the Nevada Water Innovation Institute, as I mentioned to you, we are, the university as well as we are, very, very delighted that your vision, two and a half years ago, led us to create Nevada Water Innovation Institute, which is now, by the way, approved by the Nevada System of Higher Education as an approved research institute, which is an important part of the university's goal to be very research active, as you might have heard about a month ago. The university has been categorized by Carnegie Foundation as Tier One Research University. That puts us in a big league of 130 research universities in the country. So for Nevada to have two universities, UNR and UNLV, in that list is very, very happy news, because if you take away all the big boys of Ivy Leagues and the major schools, for a state to have two universities of the state of our size is really commendable. Anyway, so you've met with some of the international collaborations that people who have come and visited us. From Japan, we had several teams who are looking to engage Nevada Water Innovation Institute to do different things. So this is very good for us. And we had a team from Mexico come, which is at the invitation of the university, the president. So we are also exploring with them, because water is a big issue for them. We have a gentleman, Dr. Janusz Karwat, coming April 1st. He's chairman of the board of a water agency in Rebnek, Poland, is going to spend two months here, and the goal for him is to learn from us, what we have done collectively in Nevada Water Innovation Institute, and how we are driving innovation while meeting our regional needs. So he's supported by a scholarship or a fellowship from the Polish government. We supported the information to host him here. So I'm going to look to many of you to have some interactions with him, including Nevada Water Innovation Institute Board Meeting, where we have other technology leaders from Poland coming in May, from the Central Mining Institute there. So it's an exciting opportunity for us to expand our footprint to outside the U.S., which puts us on the map, global map. And then another item that I mentioned to many of you in the last board meeting was that we submitted a proposal, which is for an industry-university collaborative research center under Nevada Water Innovation Institute, and it happens to have the name Center for One Water, which is a collaboration of six universities, Johns Hopkins University, Temple University, University of Arizona, Arizona State, University of California, Irvine, and UNR. So as a consequence of Nevada Water Innovation Institute, the big boys have recognized that we belong there, and they've invited us to join their team. We are anxiously waiting for the National Science Foundation to give us a go-ahead. There will be a sustainable path for Nevada Water Innovation Institute, because this center would be funded in five-year increments for 15 years, so by NSF at a basic level, and then we will have the opportunity to engage more than our partners, who are already involved in the Water Innovation Institute in this center. And we also have, to be honest with you, all the support that you've provided through the seven projects I mentioned and other efforts that we have completed, we've been able to leverage those funds to get significant amount of funding from the U.S. Department of Agriculture, U.S. Department of Defense, National Science Foundation, of course, Endart is our own state agency, but the War Research Foundation. It's recognition by those agencies in a nationally competitive environment that we have something to offer. So it's going very well. We are very happy at the progress. And with that, I'll stop here, and I'll be happy to take any questions, Mr. Chair, with your permission. And after me will be Dr. Jeff Curtis, who will be introduced by Mr. Smith.
Thank you, doctor. Is there any questions? Anybody has? I see none, and you've obviously done a good job of explaining all this. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on this item that anybody's gonna want to bring up?
It's style for action. If you would like to just accept the report, that would probably be appropriate.
Anybody interested in making the motion?
I'll move to accept the report.
Motion to accept the report from Commissioner Plansburg.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Drinkwater. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Pagila. There's a tremendous amount of effort going on in the wastewater treatment and effluent management side of the subject matter that we need to cover in our Western, in the Regional Water Management Plan. And so it's hard for me to keep track of just what your funding is covering, but the breadth of the work that's being done right now, I just want to say thank you again to Dr. Pagila for covering such a broad spectrum. And I want to say that if any of the projects that he has talked about pique your interest, and you'd like to know a little bit more about, I will dig a little deeper and try to get, and one of the investigators to come in and give you a status report, maybe at the appropriate time when they've got some results, especially if it's one of the newer projects. So thanks again.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. A question I would have, at the end of the day, is there anybody trying to get a handle on what the cost of implementing? Let's say the program is fully successful, and then there'll be a time when it would, somebody would want to implement it. Is there any idea, is there a parallel group that's possibly looking at the cost of implementation?
Scaling up the costs are part of the scope of a couple of the projects that Dr. Pagila presented. So when we get to the point where we can do a detailed presentation on those projects, then the costs would be layered in in the final report.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no more questions, we'll go on to the next item. Item seven, report on development of the Regional Effluent Management Planning Guidance Document, including regional agency and facility goals, and overall, or overview of the facility capacities, possible direction to staff. And Jim, can you tell us what this is?
Sure. I will introduce Dr. Jeff Curtis, who has been retained by the university and the Nevada Water Innovation Institute to take on one particular project that was recommended by this body for funding to the Western Regional Water Commission. It's a three-year, covers three fiscal years. There's a list of tasks that Dr. Curtis will run you through, but generally, it is to develop a guidance document for decision-making and implementation of effluent management methods and strategies moving forward. That would cover the entire region. So with that introduction, Jeff, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Jeff Curtis. I'm a research associate professor with the Nevada Water Innovation Institute. And this particular project is to develop an inter-agency regional effluent management planning and guidance document. Let me apologize, because I either need to see you or see my notes, so I'll be putting on my reading glasses and taking a look. Yeah, I just can't get used to them. So the background for this, we're charged with helping the Regional Effluent Management Team to develop immediate and long-term effluent management scenarios for the Truckee Meadows Service Area, the TMSA. It's the team, the Regional Effluent Management Team, that has all of the local historical regional expertise, and what I bring and the university brings is an ability to listen, facilitate this, prepare documents, synthesize stuff, and to some extent, bring in some new ideas where possible. So what's been the approach so far? Our efforts have been focused on working closely with the Regional Effluent Management Team, and to extract any sort of understanding and insight that we possibly can. We've been working on the framework and the expectations of what this guidance document might look like. We've developed effluent management goals for regional municipal, from a regional municipal and facility perspectives. And these goals are going to be useful in shaping how the document looks and what we intend to accomplish and how we will. We've so far assembled and reviewed all the existing documents and reports relating to effluent generation use and practices that we can find. Some of them date back 30, 40 years. I've got a library of about 120 documents at this point now. I'd like to say I know them all, but you know, it's, there's been an awful lot of work and studies that have been done in this area pertaining to how we use water, dispose of water, et cetera. Importantly, right now, and what we've been working on lately, is to define and evaluate present conditions. What sort of situation are we in right here today? And with that knowledge, we know a little bit about how to plan for the future. And I'll show you a little bit about some present conditions here towards the end of the presentation. And lastly, evaluate effluent management scenarios from an agency and a regional perspective. So not only are we here to work with the county or City of Sparks, we're going to try to approach this a little bit more reasonably, or regionally. Document framework. What is a framework? Well, you know, we kind of look at it as the column, the common elements that the group agrees on, that are more or less fundamental in regional effluent management planning. So these are some of the building blocks, some of the fundamental givens that we see in this document. First is to support TROA and maintain regional and downstream uses that comply with state and tribal water quality requirements. Effectively manage the water resources that we have, adequately plan, build, and treat, so that the effluent management will not be a limiting factor in regional growth. Within a regional approach to effluent management, each agency must plan for self-management of effluent generated within their jurisdiction. So now that's a little complicated, but from a regional perspective, we still need to all take care of our own facilities, more or less, and our own destiny. Number five, to ensure that effluent management goals are consistent and coordinated with long-term water planning for the region to the extent possible. And the last part of the fundamental framework is to continue managing effluent as an asset rather than a liability. So if we look at regional agency and facility goals, this is what the team has more or less come up with. We've vetted it to some other groups, and this is about what we're kind of settling down into. But if you see any of these that you don't like, bio me and shoot me an email, and I'll bring them back up to the team's attention. For a regional goal, number one, develop sustainable solutions to effectively and reliably manage effluent. Number two, develop redundancy and resiliency with respect to effluent reuse. Evaluate treatment technologies capable of producing exceptional A-plus quality water. And when ready, execute a regional approach to introduce the concept of A-plus water to the community. So I think the active components of these four goals are sustainable solutions, redundancy and resiliency, to continually evaluation of these technologies, and when ready, start talking about A-plus and figure out the strategy to bring that forward to the community. Agency goals. So this is not any one particular agency, and these are not in any particular order, but we've developed six goals. One is to work proactively in a coordinated cooperative approach with respect to effluent management with regional planning agencies, city, and county and staff commissions. Develop and test alternative treatment and effluent management options for short and long-term use and reliability. Minimize risk associated with the management to an acceptable level planning. Evaluate the concept, cost, social, and environmental factors associated with the innovative use of water. So cost is a component of what we'll be putting forward. Define, resolve, and finalize regional water rights strategies related to effluent management alternatives and return flow, consistent and coordinated with long-term water supply plans and operating agreements. Just that one alone could be three years' worth of work. That's a very challenging one. And number six, convey the importance and urgency of effluent management to agency and decision-makers, one of the things we're doing now. So I think coordinate and cooperative approach, testing alternatives, minimizing risk, concept, cost, social, environmental factors, water rights, importance and urgency are the highlights of those goals. Now, if we break it down to what we think might be an individual plant perspective, would be our facility goals. We've identified four of those. Proactively maintain the full functionality, operation of the existing treatment and reuse systems. So that's essentially take care of what we have. Plan for growth and implement treatment plant and system improvements. Plan and implement the key. Anticipate, plan, and best manage future NDEP permit requirements and constraints, such as numerical limits or flow rates, et cetera. And number four, develop succession plans related to the loss or retirement of critical agency staff or contractors, which is fairly topical right now with the retirement last week. So the document framework and these effluent management goals will ultimately guide us in the preparation of this document by giving us some content to address and answer. So let's see. In a minute, I'm going to show you a series of estimated influent flows for each of the five regional plants. Before we start planning any effluent management strategies, we need to understand what's happening at each. happening at each facility. These, I want to apologize, are sort of first draft figures, but understand from our perspective, it's not about treatment plant capacity, but ultimately, we're trying to predict what sort of effluent in terms of volume we might have in five, 10, 15 years. And this is one of the tools that we've started to look at for planning purposes. Excuse me. So the way we projected these future influent flows is we have used values that have been generated by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. They use typically two different models. One is the consensus forecast, and the other is the population employment model. Both of them are fairly similar, but what I've shown is the line that represents the average of the two of them. And some new projections are due out here in a few more months, so I should have some more accurate numbers pretty soon. I've also included what I call trigger points, and I'll show you a little bit more about what those are here in a minute. Now, let's see if we'll be able to see this. Okay, here is the first graph. This is for the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility, showing past and projected flows. The x-axis is the year, y-axis is flow in MGD or plant capacity in MGD. There is a solid blue line, which represents actual measured flow. It's flow that we've got data on, it's about 12 years there. The dashed blue line, and I don't have a pointer, but that represents the projections, the projections that have been, come up with at this particular point. And the red line shows the plant capacity. So this is Cold Springs. Its permitted capacity is .7 MGD. It's a secondary treatment facility. Effluent disposal is via 12 rapid infiltration basins, and there is no formal reuse at this particular time. So what you can see is around 2030, the flow, the projected flow will hit the capacity of the facility. So that's roughly about 11 years. The question that I'm trying to get resolved when they did these projections was, did it anticipate anything like Stonegate? Because throwing Stonegate in here now may change the slope of that line. Okay, Reno Sted. Same axes, year on the x-axis and flow on the y. Reno Sted is a 2.35 MGD facility permitted, that's average monthly. It's secondary with tertiary filters. Surface discharge is to Swan with a small component of reuse. And right now, they're reusing about a third of the flow that comes into the plant, about 500 acre feet annually. So you can see with the dashed red line that there is a planned plant expansion somewhere in the future. It may be before or after 2012. At right around the year 2012, the gap between the incoming flow is about .3 MGD. So whether they stage the increase in plant capacity over a period of time, or whether it jumps from 2.35 up to 4, I'm not privy to that planning particularly. Things that might affect this plant are, there's planned to shave maybe .5 MGD of influent over to Tumworf, and that will lower the slope of the curve. But then there's also the possibility that the very first plant we looked at, Lemon Valley could, I'm sorry, the plant that we haven't looked at yet, Lemon Valley could be decommissioned and otherwise send flow over to Reno Sted. So understanding this sort of stuff is going to help us with figuring out how much effluent is going to be available for use in certain areas. And this is the ultimate objective of looking at these in a little bit more detail. Lemon Valley. Lemon Valley is a .3 MGD plant. Secondary treatment with lagoon polish. The effluent goes to evaporation ponds with some discharge to lemon, Swan Lake Playa, and there is no formal reuse component at this particular time. The permitted capacity is .3 MGD. And what you will notice is the predicted, the measured line drops off at 2018, and my predicted line, which is hypothetical at this point, picks up at that point. And from the look of this graph, at any given time, we might very well be approaching capacity. I don't know what the flows are to that plant, but this is right in where we're at now at this point. It could very well be that the slope of that line is not as aggressive as that initial uptick, which is my assumption right now. South Truckee Meadows. Same axes. South Truckee Meadows is permitted at 4.1 MGD with a max day of 4.5. It's a secondary plant with tertiary filtration. It's a zero discharge plant, and all of the water is 100% reused at this particular time. The plant capacity, like I said, is 4.1 MGD. You can see right around year 2020, there is again a planned plant expansion. It's likely to be staged so that it may, for the first few years, just add an MGD or two in capacity, or, you know, it may go all the way up to 6 MGD like I've got shown. The biggest limitation to this particular facility right now is finding effluent reuse customers and balancing the incoming flow with the needed outgoing flow. There is no surface discharge. All right, last plant, just to make things get a little bit more complicated. This is the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I have not have an opportunity to fully jive my numbers with Mr. Drinkwater's numbers, but we'll get to it. So in this case, I have two growth projection lines. One is a very sort of aggressive line, which could represent an increase in flows from Stumworf or Reno Sted, or additional density in growth, so that your growth is fairly aggressive. And then the other one is a reasonably predicted one, from conversations with Mr. Drinkwater. It's probably likely somewhere between the two, but hopefully, these are numbers that will get fleshed out a little bit more by the Regional Planning Agency, and we can come back and take a look at these in a minute. So it's a 40, it's permitted hydraulic capacity is 44 MGD. It's, the treatment is advanced. It has a surface discharge to the Truckee River with about 30% of the water being reused at this time. So the lines are these so-called trigger points, and they largely represent effluent quality and the TMDL. So you know that flow times concentration works out to pounds per day. So if you have a pounds-per-day TMDL of, say, 500 for nitrogen, an increase in flow, keeping your nitrogen concentration the same, is going to mean that you're going to hit your pounds-per-day discharge limit more rapidly if the flow increases or the concentration greatly changes. So the very first trigger point that you see that the plant may hit is that of total nitrogen. It is that lower purple line. With the aggressive forecast, it could hit that in somewhere around eight years. If you look at the non-aggressive flow forecast, run that out, it could be somewhere in about 31 years, or 2050. So there's quite a bit of fine tuning that might need to be done on that. But you'll notice that right above the total nitrogen trigger point at 38 MGD is the TDS at 39 MGD. So it, from our standpoint, balancing flows and both of those trigger points at one time are going to be critical in figuring out how this effluent gets pulled out from the water rights, gets sent elsewhere or otherwise reused, so that we can lower the curve here if one we hit nitrogen and TDS. Next line you hit is at 40 MGD, which is BOD. The red line is 44 MGD, that's permitted hydraulic capacity, but all of these other ones before that may make that move. And then very lastly is up at 500 milligrams, 500 MGD is total phosphorus. Questions on this one? So obviously, this is something that I'm sure Michael's got numerous spreadsheets on, and, you know, I'll be working with him a little bit. Like I said, our concern is not how the plants run or effluent quality particularly, it's what can we do with the effluent from respect to reuse and keeping it a valuable resource here in town? Well, so what are our next steps? Switched glasses now. So the next thing we're going to do is better identify the constraints and restrictions on effluent use. We know we can get effluent, but is it dedicated someplace else? Is there a constraint on it based on water quality? So we want to develop some effluent management options and scenarios, both from a facility and a regional objective. We want to recommend some schedules and some trigger points for decision-making and implementation, and estimate the costs associated with effluent management scenarios from a relatively high cost level estimation. And that's it, folks.
I just had one item of clarification, which probably everybody caught, but you were talking about the Reno Sted wastewater treatment. I think you said 2012 for the possible extension, expansion. I think we all know what you meant was 2022.
2022, yeah. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh.
Mr. Markey.
Thank you. Jeff, just to let you know, Mr. Flansburgh and Mr. Drinkwater and I have been getting together on some modeling we're doing. I wish the numbers that you presented were this good. Those lines are going to come down some.
Are they?
We'll be happy to work with you to get you the latest that we know.
Great. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Drinkwater?
Anyway, Mr. Curtis, yeah, we, as Dr. Curtis said, we hadn't quite connected on all these numbers. I just want to make it clear. My big concern was that precipitous increase in the projected flow, which you explained now, and that's what I was missing, was that includes an estimate of possible flow shave from either Stumworf or Reno Sted, because I was wondering who exactly was moving to Reno to cause that.
Ten million gallons in 10 years.
Generally where we were having the disconnect. The other numbers, when you back into the concentrations, they're, for now, first order estimate, pretty good. And the question, so one of the things we're looking at is effluent use, so now my expectation is we'll try to lay on top of this. When you look at the flow on this, on these graphs, particularly Tumworf's graph, that's flow to the Truckee River. That's the important thing to keep in mind. So any flow that we can divert away from the river would not have any impact on those upper limits, and particularly the TM or the TDS limits.
And that's exactly where I hope to, you know, offer some assistance in. All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Anybody else? This is, I guess we can make a motion on this to accept the report if we want. Anybody would like to make that motion? Commissioner Drinkwater?
I'm going to accept the report.
Second.
Commissioner Salam, seconds. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Curtis. Okay, we go on to item eight. Report on legislative activities, including bill draft requests and bills pending in the 2019 session of the Nevada Legislature that may affect or are of interest to the Western Regional Water Commission or the Northern Nevada Water Commission. John Rhodes, would you like to talk about this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Rhodes, legal counsel for this commission and the Western Regional Water Commission. I'll try to give you a brief report here today. I'll start with just a summary of what's been happening. The legislature's been in session for just over a month now. There were a lot of BDRs on opening day that have already been introduced as bills. A lot of those are prefiled. So when you look at the handout, which I have provided you as part of my presentation today, you will see that the actual bills that have been introduced actually outnumber the BDRs by quite a bit, even at this early stage. And we anticipate that the BDRs that are going to go anywhere will become bills and will be introduced fairly rapidly here. The Western Regional Water Commission, at its last meeting, appointed a legislative subcommittee consisting of Commissioner Deere from Reno, Commissioner Dare from Sparks, and Commissioner Lucy from Washoe County. Tumwaw also, the Tumwaw Board also created a legislative subcommittee. That committee consists of, again, Commissioner Dare from Sparks, Commissioner Brekis from Reno, and Commissioner Hartung from Washoe County. The Tumwaw Legislative Subcommittee met a couple of days ago on Monday, and they reviewed a lot of bills that their lobbyists have presented, and they made some subcommittee recommendations at that meeting. The Western Regional Water Commission Legislative Subcommittee has not met yet. We will have our first meeting next Friday, a week from this Friday, on the 15th, and that will be a concurrent meeting with the Tumwaw Legislative Subcommittee, which is the way we've traditionally done these meetings in the past. In looking at my report, you will notice that it is quite a bit more lean, probably, than the reports that you're used to seeing from your lobbyists for your governmental entities. And I'll explain the reasons for that, basically. For example, you'll notice that there are no workers' comp issues, there are no public works issues, there are no employee benefits issues. The reason being that the Western Regional contracts out all of those services. So they're not really things, we could follow them if I get that direction, but I think they're more appropriately handled at the individual local governmental entity level. So when you look at my staff report, you'll see that it's heavy on the water bill side. And the reason for that is, as a water planning commission, both this body and the Western Regional, almost all of those bills that you see dealing with water and water rights, in the long run, come down to having an effect on the availability of water supply, water conservation, or water quality. So that's why it's kind of weighted in that direction. I'll just point out a few bills of note. On page one, under the water issues, there were three, the first three bills in blue there, after the black. The blacks are just BDRs, and there's no language available for them. All of the actual bills, if you go to the Western Regional website, those blue numbers are hot links, and if you click them, they will take you right to the actual text of the bills. So AB 30, AB 51, and AB 62 were three state engineer bills. They basically expand the authority of the state engineer in various areas, and I've provided some brief explanations. And the word that we're getting is that those bills did not receive overwhelming support upon their introduction in this session. So we'll be watching them and see where they go. Oh, I'd point out also, I may have mentioned this, where my chart says Subcommittee Commission, that's actually a staff recommendation at this point, because our Subcommittee hasn't met yet. And you will see, almost always, the Western Regional takes a neutral watch position. We don't tend to get actively involved in going down to Carson lobbying in terms of supporting or opposing bills, or trying to change the language of bills. We, our function more, as we've been directed, is just to track these bills and keep both this commission and the Subcommittee and the Western Regional Water Commission informed, because you have to know what's going on down there. And it's easy for things that can get through the legislature and have a direct effect on you. For example, going through my list, I'm going to turn to page two here. Under ethics issues, there's another bill that just made- Under ethics issues, there's another bill that just makes wholesale revisions to the Nevada Ethics in Government Law. The Legislative Council summary alone is 12 pages of small print. So I haven't gone into that one in detail yet, but I will be studying that and seeing what effect it may, may have on you as members of a public body, and particularly the elected officials as members of the, the Western Regional Water Commission. Also, on the final page there, page three, I'll point out AB 70, which is a Attorney General bill, making numerous revisions to certain open meeting law requirements. That's a fairly extensive bill also. There's a three-page, small print summary from the Legislative Council Bureau on that one. So I will be looking into that in more detail and providing more detailed reports to you and the other bodies as we go along. This is a non-action item, so you don't need to make a motion, but I would be happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability on any of these, any of these things that have happened, or, or the bills that we've listed so far.
Mr. Rhodes, obviously, I haven't read the bill, but there's one that speaks my curiosity. So if I read it, and, and I think there's, it's SB 140 that tells the state engineer to reserve 10% of unappropriated water for temporary use in emergencies. Could there be a room to use A-plus water as that reserve instead of unappropriated groundwater, is my question. I haven't read the bill.
Yeah, and I read the bill, and it didn't specifically refer to surface water, it didn't specifically refer to groundwater, and it didn't refer to reclaimed water. It said unappropriated water. So my conclusion would be that, yes, it, it could affect, it could be available for a 10%, but that's off the cuff.
Sure, but my question for you is not so much what the specific language is, but if, if we wanted to make a recommendation that they consider including that language, is, is there a mechanism for us to do that? Is it?
I can bring it up at the Legislative Subcommittee and see if there's an appetite to convey that information, and, and you can do that through your Reno City Council also, both. So I'll follow up on my end, and I...
Or Sparks.
Or Sparks. Or Washoe County.
I think so, that was my question.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you, John.
Thank you.
And we'll go on to the next item, which is Program Managers' Report. Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The, the two reports that you're used to seeing are available for you in, in your staff report. Item 9A is the status of the projects and activities that are funded by the, the Regional Water Management Fund that are showing up on this fiscal year's reporting. You okay? Okay, I'm sorry. And so as, as we issue the purchase orders and get the projects underway, they'll show up on this sheet, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the, the projects that show up on that table. And then on the next page is the financial status report. And where we are, it says through period nine, but I think we're probably actually only seeing a report through, through the first eight months of the fiscal year. You can see that our revenue is, is on track, if not a little ahead of schedule. It looks like, as far as the water surcharge revenues, we have collected about 90% so far of what we've projected, so we're in good shape as far as revenues. And then our expenditures are clearly below what we have projected, and so we can look at where we are expecting to be back in that final page of the budget breakdown, where Mr. Westall has put together a, an estimate to complete the year. But as of now, we are well within the black and looking like we're going to hit revenues. So with that, I would turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Anybody have any direction to Jim regarding this item, or questions? Seeing none, thank you. Next item is discussion regarding location, possible agenda items for the April 2019 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting and other future meetings, possible direction to staff. Mr. Smitherman.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep talking. April 3rd would be the date for our next meeting. It would be scheduled for this room at the same time, 1:30 in the afternoon. The first thing up on the agenda would be the selection of a new chairman and vice chairman. As you know, that, that rolls over every April, and so think about campaigning this year. And then next, I've asked Commissioner Houck if he would bring us a report on the snowpack and the projected water supply outlook for, for fiscal year. I know that he has been on the circuit presenting this one, so we always look forward to him, especially after a bumper year like this, it'll be, it'll be a good report. Right. And then after, after that, we'll start bringing you recommendations for amendments to contracts for ongoing projects. I can't tell you exactly which ones that we'll be, we'll be bringing to you, but we'll try to bring those in, in smaller chunks, so that we don't bring them all to you at the, at the end of the fiscal year. But expect to see two or three recommendations for amendments to ongoing projects. And with that, I would turn it back to you for any other requested items, and any other direction on this one.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any additional items for that meeting, or would they like to take some action on this item? Do we need any action?
I'll move, make a motion to schedule our next meeting on April 3rd at 1:30 at this location.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Flansburgh. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Enlow?
Markey.
Oh, Markey.
The other one.
Okay, okay.
Say John.
From one of the Johns.
Say John.
Say John, focus on him.
Yeah, John Enlow, I guess. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pos. Motion carries unanimously. I have a question regarding meetings. Are we going to have a joint meeting with the WRWC on the 20th still?
Yes, we are, thank you. I neglected to write that one down in my notes, but yes, you'll be given notice of that one. It will be the 20th at 8 o'clock in the morning at Sparks, and will be in the basement training room. So that's downstairs in, in the main city hall building. And we'll, we'll try to cover the workshop on priorities and on the, on the recommended budget that, that you looked at today. And then I think we've got another request for contract and one other item that I'm, that's slipping my mind.
Okay.
But I'll, we'll get you out the agenda for that one in compliance with the open meeting law.
It's a little early in the morning for me, but...
That's March 20, correct?
March 20th, yeah. Yeah, apologies for that, it's, we've got a full agenda, and we've got to get that meeting done before the, the Tumwa Board meeting, which is scheduled for 10 o'clock.
Oh.
That, that's why we start so early.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smitherman. So we'll have that meeting on the 20th of April at the Sparks City Hall downstairs.
20th of March.
Oh, March.
20th of March, yes.
Would I say April? Yeah, that's important.
Coming right up.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Anybody have any? Don't see any staff comments?
Just, again, as the wastewater and effluent management service providers here locally are planning for the future, I can express for the, those representatives on the effluent management team, appreciation for all of the assistance that we're getting from the university and from NWII. So just want to say thanks again, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have a public comment period again, limited to three minutes, time limit per person. I have no comment cards and see nobody in the audience that would like to make public comment. So our next item is adjournment, possible action. We have a motion for adjournment. A second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, and we're done for today. Thank you very much.
Good job.